Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one virtual Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, I'll begin with our preamble that we do for each of these meetings. Good evening. As Chairman of the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen, I am declaring that an emergency exists and I am invoking the provisions of RSA ninety-one dash A colon two, three B. Federal, state, local officials have determined the gatherings of ten or more people pose a substantial risk to our community in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID nineteen. In concurring with their determination, I also find that this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of town government and services, which are vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public accessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Any person found to be disrupting this meeting will be asked to cease the disruption. Should the disruptive behavior continue thereafter, that person will be removed from this meeting. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states the name, please state whether there was anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Uh, so we'll start off with, uh, with Linda.
Yeah, Linda Murray. I'm in a room by myself in my house.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, Dave? Yeah, we didn't hear anything. You're not muted, are you?
Can you put the volume up?
Still not hearing anything. Well, for those of you that can't, for those who can't read lips, he's there in a room by himself, possibly a dog walking around if it's the usual. Uh, okay. Thanks, Dave. Uh, Luke?
Uh, Luke Gordenberg. I am in my office alone and nobody else is present.
Thank you, Luke. Uh, Brian?
I'm in my office alone. No one else is present. Brian Deshaies.
Thank you, Brian. I'm Brad Harriman. I'm also in a room by myself at, at home here this evening. Uh, hey, before we get into the regular, uh, agenda, I just want to publicly welcome Luke and Brian to the Board of Selectmen. They were just elected to at our elections here last Tuesday, a week ago yesterday, and, uh, I'd like to welcome them to the board, so. Welcome and hope you have a good time with us. Uh, first order of business, um, Casey, do we have a, also, that's true, we have Casey filling in for Mr. Pinio this evening. Is our acting town manager with us for this meeting? So thank you for doing that, Casey.
No problem. Uh, and no, we do not, oh, sorry, go ahead. You didn't ask.
Okay, no, you're reading my mind. Do we have a need for non-public this evening?
No, sir, we do not have a need for non-public session this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda will be the consideration of minutes of February seventeenth. Do we have any? Comments, changes?
Would you like a motion to accept?
Certainly, I would love one, Linda.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes of, uh, February seventeenth as, uh, presented.
Thank you. Is that a second, Dave? Yep. Okay, seconded by Dave Senical. Any other discussion? We'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That was a yes. Um, Luke?
I'll abstain.
You'll abstain, okay, because you weren't here. Uh, Brian?
I'll abstain.
Okay, two abstentions there, and Brad Harriman, I vote, uh, vote yes to accept the minutes as presented. Okay, now we have, uh, public hearings in front of us. First one being the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the First Congregational Church of Wolfboro to host a memorial service at Kate Park on April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, from ten AM to twelve PM. Do we have somebody here from the church that's going to present this? Let's see anybody coming on.
I, I guess I'll address it, Brad. I'm not, I'm not sure who was gonna be present from the church, and they could possibly be late. But I'll just give you a brief overview. They've had, the First Congregational Church had a longtime parishioner pass away. So they have put in a permit to have a memorial, um, at Kate Park. Social distance. Comply with COVID guidelines. Applications complete with insurance.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, it's kind of the way I read it there and stuff, so, um, at this point, I'll open up a public hearing to anybody out in the audience that has any questions or would like to make any comments on this one. Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, board members, any questions? Linda?
Yeah, I just have a statement of the, uh, Task Force on, um, uh, programs met. And one of the things that we were going to have Tom Zadi do is give us a calculation of how many people could be in the park three feet apart. And, um, based on that, which I believe we're going to eventually get to regulations three feet apart, we'd be able to give the, uh, church the maximum number that should be in that, that park.
I think we could put a, obviously put a condition on the approval that, uh, that they meet whatever the guidelines will be set in at the time. And, uh, that would probably address that.
Just give them a number, a number on, on what the square footage is.
Yep. Any other comments from the board? Brian, just so you know, I don't have, for some reason, you're not on my screen here, so if you have something to say, just, you know, speak up, because I'm not gonna be able to see you raising your hand at all here, because for whatever reason, you haven't jumped on my screen yet, so.
All right.
So don't be bashful. Any other comments from the board? Seeing that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the temporary event permit for the First Congregational Church of Wolfboro to host a memorial service at Kate Park on April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, from nine, ten AM to twelve PM contingent upon the Governor's COVID nineteen guidelines.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, Dave's second. Okay. Motion's second on the floor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That was a yes. Uh, Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman votes yes also. All right, thank you. Okay, our next public hearing is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host weekly model sailboat regattas from March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, to November fourth, two thousand twenty-one, from eleven AM to four PM. Assuming this is all in Back Bay here. Language here doesn't say so. Um, Mark, you look like you're with us here. Would you like to?
I am. This is year number thirteen. Uh, I, I was really impressed with, uh, last year. We had absolutely no, uh, COVID issues. We were limited the, the boats in the water to ten. Uh, we stayed, everybody wore a mask and was very good about it. And, uh, we stayed six feet apart, so it was a very successful season, and obviously, we're gonna start that way, and as, uh, things flex with the COVID issues, we'll flex with it. And again, this is our thirteenth year, so, and I think the townspeople and guests to the community have really enjoyed our program.
All right, thank you, Mark. At this point, I'll open up the public hearing to anybody out in the audience that would like to ask questions or make comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, board members, any questions or comments?
I'll just.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
I might have put in the notes, we were waiting for the insurance, but we do have it.
Okay, thank you. Somebody like to make a motion on this, uh, publicly, on this, uh, permit?
Uh, I can make a motion if nobody else wants to. I move to approve the temporary vet permit for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host weekly model sailboat regattas from March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, to November fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, from ten AM to four PM contingent upon Governor Sunu News, uh, COVID nineteen guidelines, and, and he, and we have the insurance, so I won't say that.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second, Luke, thank you. Any other discussion from the board?
Um, one, one question. Did she say ten or eleven PM?
She said ten, but the application asked for eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Are you good at modifying that, Linda?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That was a yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Okay. Next, uh, hearing is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold a model sailboat regatta on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, from eight AM to five PM. Mark, you're up again.
Okay, this is a very small event and a small boat. It's a twelve-inch footy. Uh, and we usually run ten to fifteen skippers. Uh, this event was canceled last year because of COVID. Uh, I, we feel we can, uh, safely operate it this year. It's a small event, very low-key, uh, with only a few skippers, so, uh, we're going to try to proceed. If there's any issues, we'll cancel it again, but, uh, we hopefully can, can pull this event off. It's, it's cleared with the ski club. They're, they're not having any events on that weekend, so, uh, it is Father's Day weekend, but, you know, that's what it is, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. This time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody out in the audience wish to ask any questions, make any comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments? I'm gonna assume the same, uh, certificate of insurance would apply to this one that Amy just talked about for your other, um, event that you just had in front of us.
It's a blanket insurance.
I'll go ahead and make the, to approve temporary outdoor event permit for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold a model sailboat regatta on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, from eight AM to five PM contingent upon Governor, uh, Sunu News COVID nineteen guidelines.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, either Dave or Brian seconded there. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That's a yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Next public hearing, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty, virtually for the acceptance of unanticipated funds in excess of ten thousand dollars in accordance with RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B three A for the following. One, relative to the Wolfboro PD as sub-recipient, shall receive a sub-grant from New Hampshire Department of Justice for expenses incurred and services provided to the Attorney General's Drug Task Force. And number two, relative to an anonymous donation in excess of ten thousand dollars to the town of Wolfboro to be used for Wolfboro Public Safety. Chief, you are up.
Thank you very much. Yes, so, uh, the DOJ grant is obviously for investigative purposes. Uh, that's a biannual grant. Uh, once that's approved, that carries for two years. Uh, and the second grant is for additional monies being added to the New Hampshire Highway Safety, uh, grants that we put in for every year. Um, the, the, with the addition, uh, just over six thousand dollars brings us just above twelve thousand for total grant monies. So that's the reason for, uh, that, that, uh, second grant being added.
So, I'm sorry, that one has to go on April seventh, because I had to put it in the paper for the highway safety. So you're just doing DOJ tonight. You gotta come back next time for the next one.
Okay, no, no problem. So, so, uh, DOJ, uh, is, is it? Uh, if anybody has any questions, I'll, I'll entertain questions at this, at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chief. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody out in the audience wish to ask, uh, any questions, make any comments? Steve, were you gonna say something?
No, no, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve. All right, at this point, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? I'll just make one comment there. I enjoyed opening up the first page here and seeing on the page there that, uh, you had the announce, announcement on. You actually have some puzzles there to entertain ourselves while we're reading the, uh, the packet tonight, and yesterday. So. Linda?
Brad, yeah. Am I, I just clarify, clarify what we're approving. We're approving this grant, which is total of one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty thou, one hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant. Which is the paperwork we have.
Yes, that's correct. It's a biannual grant, so, uh, that grant is good for two years, and another two years I'll come back, uh, with either that same amount or a little bit more, depending on, uh, what the Attorney General decides to do.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we I move that we accept the, uh, depart, New Hampshire Department of Justice grant for one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, it's second to approve the, uh, proportion for the Department of Justice for one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. All right. Thank you on that. Our next, uh, public hearing. Thank you, Chief.
Um, Brad, Brad, Steve will do the, Steve Wood will do number two for the police.
Okay, okay. Gotcha, so we're still on.
Still on police, yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, you're gonna, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, uh, I'm here tonight, um, wearing two hats. One, Chairman of the Wolfboro Police Commission. Uh, but more importantly, I'm here as an agent for a young family here in the town of Wolfboro that is, uh, offering a rather large sum of money that will come to benefit, uh, specifically the Wolfboro Police Department. And to be even more specific than that, it is a sum of sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Casey, that would be placed, uh, upon receipt of the check. That would be replaced in the Wolfboro Police Department budget on line zero one, four two one zero zero dash three eight one. That's our outside services vehicle maintenance line. Uh, the purpose of this sizable donation is to purchase and equip a two thousand twenty-one Tesla Model Y, all-wheel-drive, uh, SUV vehicle to be utilized by the Wolfboro Police Department. Um, this vehicle will be assigned to Captain Libby. This is a incredible gift to the town and incredible gift to the police department. Because what we're getting here is not only a free automobile, um, based on the generosity of his family, but the outfit of the vehicle, which includes a new mobile radio. Typically, when we move from vehicle to vehicle, we can swap out majority of the equipment. Unfortunately, when the Crown Victoria's failed, um, over a two-year period, um, some of those radios were also junked. And we didn't, we opted not to spend the money to buy new radios if we didn't have a cruiser to put them in and have them just sit on the shelf. So just so that you understand what this involves, it is the entire price of the vehicle, uh, the delivery of the vehicle to the Wolfboro Police Department, um, the outfit for the vehicle, which is inclusive of a brand-new radio, the graphics on the side of the vehicle and so forth. It is also inclusive of full charging capabilities. So I reached out to the electrician that does work at the Public Safety Building. Um, I have a price to install, um, a charger which we will purchase as part of this, this package. This is all inclusive. So the sixty-six thousand, five hundred includes everything. It will be zero expense to the town for this acquisition. Uh, but the benefits are many. Um, at the very least, it'll be a vehicle that'll give us a great, an opportunity to enter into discussions or uh, talks with the community. They'll see the car, they'll start asking questions. It's a chance for education. It's a chance for community policing to take on a different angle. But what we're interested in on the police department, um, is tracking data from this vehicle, because we feel very strongly based on data that's coming out of other law enforcement agencies across the country. We know, for example, gas mileage is important, um, in vehicles, and in here, we're looking at, um, an electric vehicle. Well, the range on this vehicle is three hundred and twenty-six miles. At the, at the most, that vehicle may have to charge once a week. Based on Wolfboro electric rates, you'd be looking at probably seven or eight dollars for a fill-up, so to speak. And conversely, you look at a Ford Explorer, um, the gas tank, um, that cost will increase. And as we know, in July, we'll be entering into a new contract for gasoline. And we expect, at least in the police department, that those prices are gonna be reflective of the current climate gasoline, so that price probably will go up in the contract. So we won't be utilizing gasoline, obviously, for the vehicle. We'll be utilizing electricity, which is far less expensive. Historically, right now, the cars require very little maintenance, if at all, because there's really not much to do. There's no oil changes involved. There's no, uh, belts to replace. It's basically tires and, and windshield wipers. Warranty on these vehicles are quite good. Um, bumper-to-bumper warranty, it is four years or fifty thousand miles, which exceeds the industry standard. Powertrain warranty, if you will, which is the batteries on the vehicle, that comes with an eight-year, one hundred and twenty thousand mile warranty. Uh, the supplemental restraint system, which is your airbags, et cetera, that's five years or sixteen thousand. And plus warranty on the vehicle is twelve years unlimited mileage. So it comes with a lot of, uh, positive features. And this whole, you know, Wolfboro Police Department, obviously, is a very forward-thinking agency, always looking ahead. Uh, not only what's coming down the pike, but ways that we can save the community money. And we're very confident that this vehicle, um, and the data that we are able to get from it to its use will possibly lend itself in the future. If we decide to make an effort to purchase an all-electric vehicle in the future, then we'll be able to present the data that verifies that, yes, we saved X amount of dollars in using gasoline costs. We saved X amount of dollars in using the, um, maintenance costs. So basically, it's a win-win. It's an opportunity for us to, sort of, have a pilot program at no expense to the town, really, uh, other than electricity. And, um, I, I, I can't say enough about the vehicle. Uh, Dave, uh, Senical saw some pictures that I put up Captain and the chief looking at a light Tesla Model Y with black wheels at the police station one day. Dave, that's my car. Well, actually, it's my wife's car. Um, but, so I, I have a lot of knowledge about the vehicle. And we have other members in the family that own Tesla as well. Not an unknown technology, but, uh, I do know that, um, I think I mentioned, uh, law enforcement agencies are utilizing these vehicles. We know of one out west. Another California Highway Patrol bought a brand-new Model S, uh, which is, um, they bought the high-performance edition, which is about a two-hundred mile-an-hour vehicle. They've had great results with that. They're looking at purchasing another, uh, Tesla vehicle. Another, uh, law enforcement agency out in the Midwest purchased a used Model S just to see what they could do. They've been very happy with the savings. Another community out in Ohio just purchased two Model Ys. So they're starting to explore this technology also on the versatility of the vehicles. Uh, regionally, the closest Model Y or Model Threes that I know of, Kenny Bunkport, Maine, uses the Tesla Model Three, which is an entry-level sedan. Fire chief. Westport, Connecticut, purchased a Model Three. They got the high-performance edition because they wanted speed enforcement, so it's a small rocket, basically. But to our knowledge, and we, it would be the first law enforcement agency, probably any public charity in the state of New Hampshire, to deploy this technology, this type of vehicle. That's something as well. So, um, that's pretty much my presentation. Again, uh, it's a very generous donation by a local family here right now. Uh, they are a young family. The donation, I can, it will become a family charitable fund. And, uh, it, it's a very generous gift for them, and it's a very, uh, very great opportunity for them. So, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Um, now, if I understand what, what Amy just said, this, this one had, needs to be advertised, so we're gonna have this as a public hearing at our next meeting in April?
That was Dean's one. This one's already been noticed.
Okay, all right, well.
A little confusion there, yeah.
Brad, Amy, um, Linda, 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 I, I, um,
No, let Casey go first. Let Casey go first.
Okay, um, so, um, thank you, Mr. Wood, for the explanation. I didn't see any backup in here. I do not see that it was advertised, because the specifics of what it was, uh, the amount that it was, wasn't known to us, so I don't believe that, um, it was properly advertised. So we probably do need to advertise the amount, what it's for, the purpose. The backup I'm seeing just was very vague, and I didn't see that it, um, it was, um, put to a public hearing and advertised correctly. Um, we'd also need to make the motion to accept it as a donation, and then another motion to spend it out of the account that you, um, referred to. So I do, um, think that this needs to wait till the next meeting, um, but with that, I ask, is it a time-sensitive item, um? Mr. Wood?
Time-sensitive, but I, I had reached out to Amy, um, to get this posted. Um, I asked that it be very kind of vague. You know, until I had more information available, because I was still compiling. We were waiting for information to come back from the company in Newington that does all the outfit on our cruisers, uh, Motorola radio systems, uh, and so forth. Well, I, I wanted that time to compile the data, and my understanding was that we, we had to notice that it was in excess of ten thousand dollars. So.
But for, for full transparency, it really should be what it's for. As the motion above this, um, Linda just corrected, you know, the motion and said it was exactly a hundred and thirty thousand for that grant. It kind of needs to say we're accepting a donation for sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. You, you, um, blacked out. I mean, I didn't hear something, something charitable, find who it came from, um, now that you have all the specifics. So, um, I, I do think that we need to advertise this. So, um, I, I do think that we need to advertise this and give the people a chance to speak on it if they want to.
Thank you, Casey. Uh, Linda, you have a comment?
Yes, I absolutely do, uh, agree with Casey. But before I say that, I think it's a wonderful donation. I'm thrilled that it is an electric vehicle. Um, and, uh, I want to thank the generous donor who is giving it to the town. But I agree with Casey, when we hold these public hearings. We're supposed to give the public notice so they can come in and let us know whether they want us to accept it or not. And you have to have that information. Um, and I'm sorry it's not in there, um, tonight. But I want to thank them and thank the police department for hitting down in this direction. I think it is the right way to move. Um, I know the town's energy committee, committee is looking at trying to get a charging station or two an amp. And so I give you great credit for bringing, getting this gift and, and putting into this type of a vehicle.
Brad, can I add a few things?
Sure, certainly, Brian, go ahead.
I also agree with Casey. And I also would like, if Mr. Wood would also look at a few other things. Now, I'm in the process of purchasing an electric car. I've done a lot of research on many models and I'm looking at pros and cons. Um, I'm all for an electric vehicle for the town. I think it's a great idea. There are some things that we have to look at going forward. Um, we can only have so many electric cars in the fleet because, um, for a few reasons. One is that they're very difficult. Teslas especially, very difficult to repair. They have to send a mobile shop up to, um, Wolfboro in order to do repairs. If you have an accident with it, it can only go to the only Tesla, um, certified body shop, which is in North Hampton, New Hampshire. A lot of times, you can wait for, um, months for parts. They don't have a stock inventory of parts. They have parts made to order when you have an issue. So if you had four cruisers that all had issues in a matter of a month, you could be without four cruisers in your fleet for a period of time. Um, the other thing is, uh, Mr. Wood has to check with the, the mileage. The mileage, um, Teslas usually have very aggressive mileage quotes on their cars. They usually don't, in real-world testing, Consumer Reports, Car and Driver, all the, all the people that test them. They don't meet the three twenty-six. They meet a, a little bit less and a lot less in the winter and a lot less if they're driven aggressively. And let's be honest, a police officer rushing to get somewhere is driving aggressively. Um, the other thing with them is you can't leave a car idling warm when it's a Tesla. If you leave the heater on when it's fifteen degrees out for three hours, you've just depleted a lot of your battery. So they are going to have limitations to the time of the year and what they can do. So right now, we're not at prime time for electric cars. My wife and I are going to keep one gas car when I get my second electric. I'm looking at Tesla, uh, VW, Honda, and Kia right now. Um, again, lots of research I've done. Um, Westport, Rhode Island, Ohio, California, all different climates than we have. We have a much colder climate that will affect the, the winter performance. Beautiful cars, great cars. But we need to look at things, um, one car, good. But we have to look at, of course, when we decide to turn the fleet over more and more, ten years down the road, it will be a whole different story.
Oh, I, I think, Brian, that, uh. You know, yeah, it's true that we are in a different climate, but also this is an opportunity for us to. As I, as I said in my presentation, to track information to, to see if this type of technology can be applicable to. To our fleet, where I'm not suggesting that we're going to change over the entire fleet to Tesla's tomorrow. I think that would make the budget committee's heads explode when they saw the bottom line for that kind of a purchase. Um, but it's an opportunity for a free vehicle to do all, all the work. I know I've been to, um, a Tesla service center down in, uh, Peabody, Massachusetts. I know they're, they're looking to build one here in New Hampshire. Um, I'm sure that'll be happening within the next year. Uh. As, as far as the reliability of the vehicle, we've had no problem with our car in terms of cold weather and charging and things like that. Um, you know, I know there's a lot of, uh. A lot of different beliefs about electric versus, uh, you know, school-powered cars and so forth. Uh, but fortunately for us, we're not looking for the town to purchase a vehicle of this sort to do our work. It's being, or to do our, our research, if you, uh, excuse me. We'll, we'll be able to, uh. Do our, our due diligence, if you will, um, with a vehicle that's coming as a gift. Um, and, and it may not be a viable, uh, uh, type of vehicle in the future. We will learn that. It may be, turn out that it'd be, you know, it's, it's technology change. Uh, and, and right now Tesla's kind of leading the industry in a lot of, a lot of areas. Um, they were probably the first and largest, uh, to get into the business. I, I know Volkswagen is, is jumping in wholeheartedly, vollwollen, committed to, uh. Changing over their entire line of vehicles by a certain time to all-electric. Uh, and the other big brands, Ford, Ford has the Mach-E, they're releasing, they're working on electric pickup and so forth. Uh, so these technologies have been developing rapidly and changing rapidly too. Um, I know, um, there's a lot of questions, a lot of unknowns. And the only way we're going to know any of this is by doing it, so.
Yeah, I think one, I think one vehicle in the fleet is a, is a great idea. Um, just, um, looking going forward, you know, we will do our due diligence. The, um, Consumer Reports has the Model Three as a reliable automobile. They have the Model S and the Model X and the Model Y as far below reliability. They actually don't even recommend them as purchases. That being said, a, a Model Y in the fleet would be a great addition. It would be a way to see what's going to be happening going forward.
Okay, um, before we keep going on this, um, I think we'll kind of have a, we might be leaning in a consensus of the board here to. Um, have this put off to our April meeting because of the posting on the information that was available at the time. So why don't we discuss that first before we proceed any further with, with, uh, with the discussion here on the actual, uh, um. Event, uh, actual permit here. Um, so Linda.
Brad, why don't I make a motion? And then we can talk about the motion. I move that we table this until, uh, we have a, it properly noticed.
My second.
Yeah, a motion is second to table this till it's properly noticed, uh, which would be, I assume, the first meeting in April. Um, any other, any discussion on that? We can go on with that now. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, this is be to table this till our April meeting. Um, Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That was a yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. All right, thank you. Thank you for all that information, Steve. Uh, like I said, we, we want to make sure we get our i's dotted and t's crossed and we get it right in the notices and stuff, so.
I apologize, because I asked Amy to keep it vague. I didn't realize it had to be more specific than, than that. Um, so it can be noticed however you want, and I'll see you on the seventh, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item on our agenda. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty. PM virtually for acceptance of unanticipated funds for an amount awarded that is less than five thousand dollars. In accordance with RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B. Relative to grant monies not to exceed two thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars. For the town of Wolfboro to be used for the Lake's region household hazardous product facility. Hazardous waste collections. Um, do we have, is, was Dave Ford or is, uh, Daryl, oh, it's Sarah. You're going to present this one? Who, Sarah?
Yes, um, this is the annual grant from Department Environmental Services. I'm saddened to report that they've now capped the grant. It used to be based on the population of the two-member towns. And we used to enjoy the maximum amount of twenty-six cents per capita because we have a permanent site. But now, for some reason, known only to DES, they have capped this at two thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars regarding. Uh, you know, disregarding what your population is. And I know I've been doing this thirty-five years and they've never really increased the amount of money in their hazardous waste budget. Although we all know, in the last thirty years, the population of the state has increased exponentially. So if we have any representatives out there listening, maybe that's something they'd like to look into. Because if we don't have pristine waters, um, then we are losing money. Because our lakes are, are bread and butter. Uh, what they require is, um, that the Board of Selectmen has to accept this grant with a specific motion. Which I can read to you. And then, um, we need to assemble a package with a certificate of authorization from that water. And, and some insurance papers, which Amy has already included in the packet. And what we need is a regular Board of Selectmen meeting. Which would be today's held on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. The Board of Selectmen has to vote to accept the household hazardous waste collection grant funds. And enter into a grant contract with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. And very importantly, the Board of Selectmen has to further authorize someone to execute the documents. And in the past, the board has authorized the town manager, which in this case is Jim Pinio. To execute any documents which may be necessary for this grant contract.
Yep, yeah, we have that. Uh, pretty much that's wording in our motion with our packet here. Um, okay, this time I'll do is I'll open up the public hearing to anybody out in the audience that would like to ask any questions or make any comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, board members, any questions for Sarah?
Brad, I'll make the motion that Sarah just read.
Sounds good. Do I have a second? I got a second by Dave. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave? See, yes, Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Thank you, Sarah.
I, I do have one comment. I would just like to let the Board of Selectmen know that last year, in spite of, of COVID, we had a very active year. And we had a hundred and twenty-three people from other communities that used our facility at the tune of eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. So we have been, uh, fulfilling our mission, which is to help the towns of Alton and Wolfboro. As well as people from away, which is, um, next to impossible. Because there is no other permanent site in the state that will take somebody from away. And we also do medicine collections. And I want to thank the town of Wolfboro for their ongoing support of this program. Because without it, we couldn't open our doors.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, next item on our agenda is public input. Anybody out in the audience, uh, have any public input for us? Limited to three minutes per person, not to exceed fifteen overall. Don't see any public input out there, so we'll move on to our next item, which is our bulk vote. This week here, we have our weekly manifest. Um, the manifest for March fifth is for a hundred thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and nine cents. And our man, weekly manifest for March twelfth is eight hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and two cents. Which obviously includes a, uh, a school, uh, payment to the, uh, Governor Whitworth School Board. We have, uh, one property tax refund for a hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Two intent to cut timber, uh, wooden timber, one on Browns Ridge Road, one on North Wakefield Road. A current use application on Haynes Hill Road. Um. One, two, three, property tax credit exemptions, uh, one on Center Street, one on Tredwell Lane, and one on Robin Acres Drive. And, uh, also return of planning board surety funds for two thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Plus interest for the Wolfboro Camp School. Um, I could explain a little bit to that. I think there's a letter in there and a packet too from, from Tavis there. There was a project on a Wolfboro Camp School. Um, that isn't going to be going forward anymore. And the funds that were put in there were strictly for engineering oversight services. It wasn't for a bonding to make sure the project was done or anything. It was strictly for oversight of the, uh, for the engineer to, um, oversee the project there. So, um, the planning board voted unanimously to, uh, return these funds. So. Board members, any questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bulk vote, items, uh, A through F.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Dave to approve the bulk vote, items A through F. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, Linda?
Yes.
Dave? Luke?
Yes.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Okay, we have no, on our agenda, next item is Board of Committee appointments we have done. So we'll go to new business. Which is approval for the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. To vote in a new chair and a new vice chair for the coming, for the coming year. Um. At this time, yeah, Dave? Yeah, we're not hearing you at all, Dave. Yeah, started even coming in late. So I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Linda Murray as the chairman for the, this coming season. Dave, you're seconding that? Motion is second to, to appoint Linda for the chair. Any discussion? Or any other nominations for chair, I guess, first of all? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Um, Linda, I assume you'd accept that if you.
Yes.
If you vote yes, you're accepting it, so. Uh, Dave? Dave's yes. Luke?
Yes.
Uh, Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Just let people know, what we do, we kind of rotate the chairmanship of this every year so that we don't have the same person running and, you know, running the meetings all the time, so. Um, Luke kind of knows that. He was in here before and he had to turn that a two, few years ago, so. Um. Next, uh, will be, uh, to elect a, a vice chair.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Dave Synical.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
A second by Luke. Any, any other, uh, nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, we'll have a, have a roll call vote to elect Dave as the, uh, vice chair. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave, assuming you'll accept it? Will you wave? That's a yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. You should know, Brian, you, you popped up on my screen now, so I can actually see you now, so.
I bet you all the time.
Okay. So I'll continue on with the rest of this meeting and then, uh, Linda will take over at our next meeting, so. Next is a discussion for the Back Bay Skippers, uh, memorial plaque, uh, to be placed on the Bridge Falls path.
Robert Brennan is here, sir, representing the, uh, Back Bay Skippers in the Boat Museum.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
I, uh, submitted a, uh, report. Um, I was in government for thirty years, so I wrote it as a staff report. I've been working with Amy on that and also submitted a couple of, uh, photographs. One of the, a Google Earth photo of the area. And also a rendition, art rendition of what the plaque would look like. So, um, you should have that one-page report there. Hopefully you reference that and I can answer any questions if you have them.
Hey.
Brad?
Board here, yes, Amy, go ahead.
So I wasn't able to print the pictures for the packet. Um, sometimes the printer doesn't let me print pictures to the big printer. But I can forward you guys the pictures via email so you can see them. But it's a plaque and then a, a location on the Bridge Falls path. And I see Christine's here and she did review it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Christine, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, no, uh, I was just requesting that it was in a spot with. And when we move forward with the Bridge Falls path for electricity, that it wasn't in the way. And looking at the pictures, it looks like it's cleared, so.
Okay.
It, it's going to be, there's a stairway that leads to our dock. And it will be adjacent to that on the wall. and it will be adjacent to that on the water side and located where there won't be any hazard for people to run into or bicycles or anything else. We'll make sure that it gets placed in a safe spot.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any other questions, comments, or anybody ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the request of Back Bay Skippers to work with the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department on the placement of the memorial in the area of the Bridge Falls Path and as the Boat Museum has suggested tonight.
Second by Dave. Thank you, Dave. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? Yes, Luke? Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. All right. Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll get in contact with Christine.
Okay, very good. Okay, next on our agenda, hawkers and peddlers location. Do we have a... Let's see, we have an application in for site number four, is that correct? And do I understand, Linda, that you and Amy went out and looked at the locations there? Do you have any input on that? Is we're doing this?
Yes, I do. We did go out and look, and there are two possible locations. The existing location, which is 10 feet south of the crosswalk by Winnie Paws. The other one we looked at was over by Black's Paper Store. It's where we put the Christmas tree. There's a nice V there, which would give plenty of space. The only issue might be that if the product that is being sold conflicts or is in 100 feet of the, like, Black's, who might be selling hats or anything like that. So, and we'd have to change the ordinance. So I would say for this year, we need to keep it south of the crosswalk. The problem with this, south of the crosswalk, is it's on the hill, it's on an angle, and when people have had that spot, they've had difficulty getting their wagon to stay. And so they just, it ended up being put on the sidewalk. So I would say we keep it this way this year, and then the board sits down and takes a look and talks about whether they want to move it to the new location. We'd have to hold a public notice because we would be changing the ordinance.
Right. Okay. And as I look at the paperwork here, we have one applicant for this position, is that correct? That's Ally Cooper?
Yes. She was the only one that came in on time, I think.
Yep. So Torin, Torin, which is the Wake Winnie, he also put an application in, which his was after the fact because he called me for two reasons. But we can talk about his, when we move to commercial vessel landing permit. But the reason he has an application in is because he was inquiring about using that for his business. But it was received on Tuesday, and the ad was out for that Friday, which Ally complied with that. We had two other requests for applications, but they were never submitted.
Okay. Okay, so we're just considering for the hawkers and peddlers for Ally Cooper right now. So that's the way I understand it, correct? Okay. So Ally was with us a little while ago. She's... Want to make any comments on this one, or tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Sure, I can tell you a little bit about my business. So I'm Ally, everybody. I am the owner of and operator of Ally Caps, and I am a member of the Wolfboro Chamber. I primarily sell my hats, which I'm wearing tonight, so you could see an example, online and at events. I do own a brick and mortar store in Killington, Vermont, and will be set up for larger space this summer in the Chamber, which I'm excited about. I sell primarily trucker hats, beanies, and headbands. Most of my hats are like this with a state, so would be New Hampshire. I make Lake Winnipesaukee hats, Wolfboro specific hats, mountain bikes, skiing, pretty much anything outdoors. Last year with COVID and not being able to do events, I lost between $15,000 and $20,000 in revenue. So I really need this summer to make up for that and then some. I have built out a, something called a cap cruiser, which is a bike with this little contraption that pulls behind the bike, which I sell the hats off of, and I would be happy to send you all a picture of it. I did make a presentation, but I'm not sure how to share that. My price points for the hats are $25 to $40. They're all handmade. Nobody in Wolfboro sells my hats except for me. One of the cool things about my hats is because Wolfboro is such a destination town, people, you know, hopefully will see them as a keepsake and something that they can take away from Wolfboro and wherever they're from. I also would love to be on Main Street. There's so much walking traffic and boat traffic that I wouldn't have access to in the Chamber building, which is why, you know, I'm trying to get my, build my business and get my name out there. And I can't afford a storefront right now. I'm not big enough for that. So I see this as an opportunity to get my product in people's hands and meet people and make some money. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Board members, any questions? As far as you've watched, you've actually looked at the site there, Ally. Is that, that the grade on there isn't going to bother you at all?
No, my little cart, and again, I wish I could show you a picture. It's, I can take on and off the bike, so that's not a problem. It's not even three feet big. So it would fit actually really nicely there. And it's just a cart on wheels. It's not, it's very simple.
Board members, what's our, what's our wish here? So I'd be willing to make a motion?
I'd give the opportunity to anybody else, but if not, I can make a motion. I hate to make all the motions tonight. Okay, I'll move to grant the hawkers and peddlers location number four to Ally Cooper for the 2021 season contingent upon providing all the necessary licenses and fees. And there's a, I think, a state license she has to get.
Okay, that's a second by Dave, I'd say with a thumbs up. So motion is second to approve hawkers and peddlers location number four to Ally Caps. Any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is the commercial vessel landing permit for Wake Winnie 1. I believe we have a couple here that's been waiting very patiently for this meeting, so.
Hi there.
Hi. So you guys are up now. Want to tell us a little bit about?
Yeah, so we run a little business called Wake Winnie. We provide water sports charters. It's the best way to sum up what we do. We like to take people out on the boats that we own that are commercially licensed and insured and inspected through the state and teach them how to water ski, wakeboard, wakesurf, take them tubing. We offer scenic cruises, really go whatever speed the customer want. We offer a safe environment for new boaters. We have been living in Wolfboro for quite some time on the lake. I actually work at Dive Winnipesaukee. So I spend hours behind the boat, and one of the worst things I see on the lake is the rental boats cruising around. Those are advocated a lot. And we offer something else other than those, where we go out, we can show the people a good time with experience, show them the places to go, and show them how to do everything safely and comfortably.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Yeah, Linda?
Yeah, my understanding is they're asking for ability to come dock at, or dock, land, and pick up, and then take off. And that's all done at the commercial docks because it's a commercial business. It's not only the recreational docks. And usually we ask for a schedule so that the boat, their boat doesn't interfere with the Mount Washington or the Winnie Bell. And they should be coming out with schedules so that you should be able to know when they're coming in and when you can go and dock. The insurance form I saw, the certificate, was naming, I think it was Dive Winnipesaukee Winnie 1, naming the town of Wolfboro as co-insure. I think this is a great idea. I am sure that there are plenty people who come to town to vacation that would love to have somebody else take them out in the boat because they are an experience. And I, the more of this kind of activity that we have going on in the town, I think it is great. There is also, you're going to, if you put a sign up there, there is another section of the application that asks for the design of the sign, and you're going to need to work it out with the Winnie Bell and the Mount Washington, where each of you are going to place your sign on that railing. But under those conditions, I think the Board should grant this.
If I could just ask one follow-up question. I know last year that the Millie B boat did not operate, and it was unfortunate. That's a great, you know, opportunity for people to come and see the lake. And along with the Millie B, they do set up kind of a vending site to sell tickets to the boat. And they also dock and park permanently at the town docks. I was just looking for a status update, if they would also be operating this year. If they're not, we would love to take, even if temporarily, their parking space. We do hold a parking space behind Dive Winnipesaukee, so not necessary. What we offer at Wake Winnie, we actually reserve the entire boat for a group, which makes us unique kind of through COVID. It's just one driver operator that we employ on the boat with a private group, capped at nine people, just so we stay under the 10-person limit. Whereas the Millie B, I believe they still run the business plan where they sell a ticket per seat, which does expose multiple groups. And I just don't know if they've modified their business plan for the COVID guidelines, or if they will not be using the space this year. We would love to utilize that space because it's an awesome spot the town provides.
I have a couple of questions, just a couple of short ones. Is there a parking limit time in the lot by dock side?
Yes.
Yeah, two hours.
How long are you out on the boat with your customers?
The shortest that can be booked is one hour. That's not typical. That only constitutes maybe 5% of our total bookings. Our most average is two and a half hour length sessions.
And we always suggest the municipal parking lot.
Okay. And how many people do you put on a boat at a time? Or do you anticipate putting on a boat at a time at the town docks?
So we cap it at nine people per group that can get on the boat every time, just for COVID regulation guidelines. Our average group size is actually like four people.
Families.
Yeah, families, four or five is our most average customer.
And you do your best to have them park in the municipal lot?
Yes, we do. Yep, we tell them to go drive past the Red Depot. They should see some softball fields where they're parking, and then they're in the right spot.
That's fine.
Question I have, I'm assuming you guys kind of operate by reservation. People call you up, say, I want to reserve the boat on Saturday, whatever date and stuff, from 10 till 2 or whatever it is there. So go over that way from what, you know, Linda said of getting a schedule from you guys, whether you want to dock, come out there and stuff, it's going to be kind of a flexible schedule, it sounds like. So I guess I would suggest that, you know, when the schedules I receive by us from the Mount Washington and Winnie Bell and/or the Boat Museum and stuff there, that you know at least the times and stuff, what other boats are going to be coming in and out of there. So you could say, well, I can't meet you at 10 o'clock. We could do it at 9:30 or 10:30 or something like that. You'd be okay with something like that to work.
Absolutely. We've kind of already modified our schedule just to work around the Mount Washington. When it's coming to dock, it actually provides a lot of turbulence right around that docking area, which makes it hard to come and go if you're trying to do it when they're backing out or just while they're docked. So we try to be out of there half an hour before they show up and show up half an hour at least after they're gone.
Okay. For board members here, refresh my memory. I don't believe we've seen anything from the Boat Museum yet for this season. Is that correct?
Correct, Brad. They haven't, we've only had the Winnipesaukee Bell so far, and the, I won't probably get Winnipesaukee Bell or the Mount Washington schedules at least for another month. And probably because of COVID, it'll depend. Neither one went last year. And then I can reach out to the Boat Museum to see if they plan on trying to do something this year and find out. And then I guess what we'll do, though, is they all have to send their schedules to me. So I can communicate with you, Torin, and we can manage the schedules.
Hello, this is Brenda Juret, up here in the top left. How are you? I am on the New Hampshire Boat Museum website right now, and it says the Millie B will be open for the 2021 season with some COVID-19 restrictions in place, masks required, and they are limiting capacity to six passengers. So that is already on their website, and there's the schedule as well. And you can click on that on their website for 2021.
May I just post something? We did apply for a Hawker and Peddler's permit. And I understand, Amy, that we were, we just missed the deadline. But I guess I'm just looking for clarification, maybe. As far as I know, we just were told that they have not renewed their permit. As well, I think Amy told me that a lot of the Hawker and Peddler locations had not renewed their permits by the deadline. I was just wondering how those end up back for, you know, public availability, for me to apply for them if they haven't been renewed on time. Since we did miss out on location number four for missing the deadline, just wondering if it goes across.
Yeah, location number four was the only one not renewed. So hawkers and peddlers permits one through three were renewed, and the permits have to be renewed by January 31st. So they're like, all the permits will expire this year on December 31st. And it's actually a current hawkers and peddlers ordinance. So once the permit expires, they have until January 31st to renew the permit, the current applicant. If they do not renew, then we post them for public application. So number four was the only one that didn't renew. Hot Dog Bob has locations one and two, and Kurt Devilder has the third location.
And I believe when site number four went back out, went out with a, for a timeframe, for that one to be advertised the second time, and that's what we're talking about right now, so.
Thank you.
But I think regarding the uh, um, like the Boat Museum, stuff like that, um, I don't know, we don't, do we have, I don't believe we have a deadline for the applicants to come back for the commercial vessel landing permits. Um,
No, we don't, but I'm going to reach out to them since they're advertising. So we should probably get that on an agenda and get their schedule.
And again, I'm not looking to take their spot. I love what they do. Uh, it was just unfortunate last season that they did not operate, um, when that space could have been utilized and a lot of people could have experienced the lake. Uh, and I'd I'd hate to see that happen again this year.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Somebody would like to make a motion?
Can I make a motion to approve uh, the commercial vessel landing permit for Wake Winnie One?
And we have a second by Dave. Thank you, Dave. Motion of second to approve the uh, commercial vessel landing permit for Wake Winnie One. Any other discussion? Linda.
Brad? Yeah.
Yeah.
Luke, are you okay to include those conditions that I I read out earlier? Updated insurance?
And the sign being, and the sign work with uh, Washington, Millie B and uh, uh, Winnie Bell all can work it out with Amy.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, have a roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That's a yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And Brad votes yes also. All right. Welcome. Good luck with the business and hope you have a good summer here for that.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is a memorandum memorandum of understanding with FEMA COVID-19. Stan Casey and, you know, I don't know if Warmer's with us too tonight or not, but.
Um, I can speak on behalf of the chief. Um, he sent a memo to the board requesting to enter into a memorandum of understanding with FEMA for reimbursement of first responder organizations for any vaccine vaccination programs. Um, this program is uh, up to $10 million. It's for participating first responders and it's on a first come, first served basis. Uh, it could reimburse us for personal expenditures, including um, salary, wages, stipends, fringe benefits. Um, it is retroactively back until uh, January 15th and it runs till September 30th. So any of the mass uh, vaccination programs, if we have uh, first responders or um, anybody who volunteers, we can get uh, reimbursed for those hours um, through this program. Um, so we are asking um, on behalf of the chief or the board of selectmen to authorize the town manager to sign this MOU on your behalf. Um, for full disclosure, we have had in the last couple weeks, last two weekends, um, some hours were used with the permission of the town manager. Um, um, in planning that you would sign off on this because uh, there was a big one in Loudon and we did have two gentlemen uh, or two people, excuse me, uh, volunteer at that program. So.
Yep. Yep, I think that's great that they did that. So uh, board members, any discussion or, you know, this is a, you know, great thing for us to participate in and uh, and and do our part to help out a little bit. So you get reimbursed at the same time. If you'd like, I'll actually, I'll make a motion here. Um, make a motion that the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum memorandum of understanding with FEMA for the COVID-19 vaccine reimbursement.
My second.
There was a second by Brian. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Yes.
Dave? That's a yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Right, thank you. Okay, next up, discussion for our financial report, actual versus budget report for February 2021.
Um, thank you. Uh, so I, before you have, uh, we're two months into the year, which is 17% of the budget. Uh, however, the budget was just approved last week. Um, so we've loaded the budget in. Um, we're right on track with our general fund. We're 17.3% um, spent. However, you know, some of the POs are uh, encumbered for the whole year. If you know how much something's going to be on a monthly basis. Um, so it's, everything's not very linear. Um, we do have like the sewer fund is at 71.8%, but that is because the biggest portion of that is our maintenance agreement and that is fully encumbered. Um, so even though it looks overspent, it's just um, committed for the year. Uh, as far as the revenues are concerned, we're only uh, for the general fund at 6%. Um, not alarming. Um, because the biggest pieces of our revenue are property taxes and that comes in July and December. Um, I don't see any um, issues uh, at this point. Um, and none have been brought to my attention, all the town managers at this point. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Casey. Board members, any questions or comments?
Linda?
Did I come through or did I, am I breaking out?
It was a good report and it's not but with only two months, I really like to see it after a quarter. Gives you a better idea of where you are. But thank you. I like the format. The only other one that that makes me a little concerned uh, is that we've only taken in 10% of the revenue on the uh, water fund. Um, and I under, I understand with Pop Whalen, I know why that isn't in yet. Um, because that usually is, most of that comes in in the uh, end of the year. But I'm just, the water one is the one that looks a little often uh, to me.
Okay, um, so you just gave me a lot to comment on. So it was my intention to come back on a monthly basis or at least submit this uh, report to the Board of Selectmen on a monthly basis. If you'd rather only have it quarterly, we could do that or we could do it monthly towards the end of the year. Um, I I guess I'd need to know what you would like to um, see. Um, I guess with COVID, you never know if the revenues are going to drop off or if we had a bad winter, which hopefully the winter's over. Um, so if you, if you're okay with it, I guess it's uh, should be done on a monthly basis.
Linda's got her hand.
I I think I think we should get it monthly. I think we should get it monthly. I think we all should have that, our eyes on it. I just find the first three months at the end of that quarter, you have a better under feeling of of how the budget's going. That's just me.
And I agree. I I agree because the voters haven't voted on the budget until March, you know, 9th or um, you know, some of the spending hasn't even begun until, you know, we get the green light and we know we're not in a default budget. So um, a lot of activity is starting now and will be in the next few months. Um, I did reach out to um, the Recreation Director and we're close to about $72,000 for Pop Whalen that has been invoiced and we're waiting for payments and that type of thing. So uh, we definitely have some um, money coming in, um, but that's a timing issue. I will um, follow up on the water fund revenue. Um, I I think also if if I'm, I'm not that familiar with Wolfboro, but usually it's in the spring when people start using more water. So um, again, I don't think that that's a very linear um, progression on 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 water usage, but I definitely will follow up with that. And I think that was all the comments I addressed um, for you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see, next on the agenda is a discussion on Warren Article 35 for the Brewster Beach Petition Committee. Linda, I understand you're gonna stop the conversation on this.
I just saw my name down there, but I'm more than willing. Um, I, I'm just going to throw this out as an idea. I've had some people ask, can I be on the committee? This is one of those um, committees where there are a huge number of people who would like to be on it because they'd like to have their say. And I was just wondering whether the board, before we create the committee, wants to hold a meeting to allow public input on people's feelings about changing the beaches. So we have some kind of an idea and then we can give the main concerns that we get from that hearing to a committee that we form later. Just an idea. I think I, there's a lot of strong feelings and I I would like more than just a small committee to be able to express those. So that's just, that was just an idea on my part.
Yeah, Luke?
Yeah, I I like that idea. I think that's a, that's a sound way to go about this process because I've gotten a lot of uh, emails and phone calls already about the opportunity to sit on that committee. So I think what Linda just said is is perfect.
Yeah, I agree with that also. I think having that because I think having a good forum, a forum or something like that, like you, you said, Linda, Luke, they ought to have a, offer a large group to come in and put their two cents worth in and uh, see what comes out of it. And then, yeah, I agree, then bring it to committee and give them some, I'll give them some, some wood to chew on and stuff to speak of and uh, you know, go forward with it.
And I also would like to see us run the beaches this year and I'm assuming will be at full capacity. You know, last year we controlled them by half in terms of parking and this year there, all the parking lots will be open fully and it will give us a better idea of if we still have big issues on Clark Road, which I think was part of the reason that they were concerned. Um, and uh, and I was, I don't care when we do it. I was thinking maybe we do it maybe in July after we get a little read of the summer or we could do it earlier. I don't particularly care one way or another, but just some ideas I had.
Any other comments? Okay, yep. So why don't we kind of move ahead with that, that plan in the back of our minds? Sounds good. Okay. Next on our agenda is a discussion, the committee chair guide, the code of conduct. Two are all given a document here. Um, kind of read, read through it here and stuff. I thought it was uh, I think it looks good. Um, I'm assuming the intent of this is probably going to be for, you know, townwide, for all of our boards and committees uh, to have some guidelines to go by, some procedures and uh, you know, conduct, you know, ethics of conduct and stuff like that. So entertain any discussion or comments on this and that the board has to say. Linda?
Boy, I have a big mouth tonight. Um, I went and kind of played off of uh, Amy's a code of conduct and I think she sent out uh, yesterday. I took some of that and put it into the Board of Selectmen's uh, rules of procedure and then I took the Board of Selectmen's rules and procedures, applied them to just committees. And the two comments related to code of conduct and ethics um, under section two, responsibilities A on the Board of Selectmen's uh, responsibilities, I added a six that says, members shall listen and respect the views of others' members and shall use appropriate and respectful language. And I also stuck that sentence uh, in under, I think it is uh, 4D. Um, put that at the end of that paragraph. And then I would like, I thought that if we asserted a section, um, let's see, where did I put that? I put a section on conflict of interest, which is 4G. Did everybody get these? Did everybody able to pick that up? So forward to you.
That was the email you sent to us, right?
It was forwarded by me.
Forward to you.
Yeah.
And then I did the section on conflict of interest and it it reads, members need to fully disclose at the earliest opportunity an actual or perceived conflict of interest. A conflict of interest is defined in RSA 21 dash G colon 21-2 as conflict of interest means a situation, circumstances or financial interest which has the potential to cause a private interest to interfere with the proper exercise of a public duty. And then I went on, I took a, a quote out of the New Hampshire Municipal Association 2019, knowing the territory that says defines a conflict of interest as a direct personal peculiary, which means financial interest in the outcome. And to me, I thought that was pretty clear. One, you have an RSA and you have another out of the book. But again, those are just uh, possible suggestion of uh, another way to do it. I was just afraid you'd get so many pieces of paper if you had it all in one, but I don't, I'm, whatever the board wants to do, I just, that's it. And I, and it really, I was thinking about Amy's and I made some changes in Amy's and I kind of built off of what Amy had done. And I want to thank Amy for all the work that she did putting that together that made me start thinking of maybe uh, um, how we may want to do it.
All right, thank you, Linda, and also thank you, Amy. Board members, any comments, questions? I just think the, you know, the documents look great and stuff. Um, I think it's good to have it all all out there written and sitting in front of everybody. So um, I think it's, I think it's a very good idea and uh, I appreciate that.
Well, the other thing about it is, is that we can't, we can make a motion, but we can't vote on the motion until the next meeting per our rules of procedure.
So I I did agree. I, you know, I thank Linda for compiling them because I agree. I need to send these out to the committee. So the less paper we can have to keep track of and make sure everybody gets copies. So at the next meeting, we're going to be appointing all the new memberships. So it's kind of great timing. After you vote on them, we'll pass them out.
Yep. So do we, do we need a motion tonight then to do anything with this? Or can we just uh, hold this off till uh, the next meeting and uh, have our motion then?
Uh, let's see.
Yeah, I think we have to vote on them at the next.
Yeah, it says amendment these rules may be moved at the board meeting, but should not be voted upon until the next regularly scheduled meeting. That's what it says in the rules of procedure. So it sounds like we make a motion to accept it, but we don't take the vote.
Okay, yep.
Or we could cha, decide to change that.
It'd be easier just to have the vote to accept it this evening then and stuff and we'll move it into next, our next meeting.
Yeah.
Was that a motion you'd like to make, Linda?
Sure, I'll make that motion that we move the rules of procedure for the Board of Selectmen. We approve the rules of procedure for the Board of Selectmen as amended and for the committee um, and commissions, boards.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Motion of second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Linda?
Well, we gotta vote on it next time. That's what's so ridiculous.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a vote on the motion to okay, I gotcha. It sunk in. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna have a vote on the motion to, okay, I gotcha. It sunk in. Thank you. Okay, so we, we'll be voting on this at our next, our next meeting. Other business? Do we have any other business this evening to bring up before the board?
I do.
Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to update the board. Dave Senical and I have been working with the Friends of the Libby Museum in a sub-group per the board's request to work on clarifying the memorandum of understanding presented to the board at a previous meeting. And we had that discussion with Dave, John Wilkins, Tom Goodwin, Jim and myself. And when we got done, the, having our conversation and working on that, we thought it would be a good idea if the Friends of the Libby, I mean, the trustees of the Libby Museum should meet and allow, and get all the documents and bring Luke and Brian up to speed. Invite the Friends of the Libby Museum to come. Allow them to ask all the questions before we present to the Board of Selectmen any memorandum of understanding. And I had thought maybe March thirty first at six thirty. We've got different designs. We have different kinds of cost figures. We have the Friends of the Libby Museum that are going to step forward and look at doing some major fundraising. And I think it's something that both Luke and Brian may have a lot of questions and want to get a better understanding before it comes before the board. So I wondered if that's was something that the board was willing to do. I think it should be a hybrid meeting. I think the board should be there with the Friends of the Libby Museum in, in person. And then if there are people who would like to hear the meeting, they can do it through the hybrid virtual. There are only, I think, we only can fit twenty six people in the Great Hall if the distance is still six feet. So that hybrid gives us the opportunity to make sure we get everybody included. And I think that that would be a good way. And I would call it a work session. The, the trustees of the Libby Museum make recommendations back to the board. So there'll be no voting at that meeting. It's just really an information and a discussion of the board and allow Brian and Luke to get caught up to speed and ask us questions and the Friends of the Libby Museum questions.
I think that's a great idea. I guess it'd be a good way to do it, like I said, to get Brian and Luke up to speed. There's a lot of information out there that's been going on this past year, a lot of stuff to digest. So they see where we're at with everything and what, what their expectations are and, and and the Libby Museum itself, you know, the condition it's in and everything. So I think that's great. Anybody else? You guys all good with that? Have an extra meeting on the thirty first?
Absolutely.
Okay. So yeah, so we'll get, we'll make sure Amy gets the information so she can notice the stuff here and we get the town hall set up to have. I think it's good to do with a hybrid and do it in person too. It's good.
I think we can have a better, they can have and all of us can have a better exchange with the Friends of the Libby Museum if we sit down in person and have that kind of a conversation.
Very good. Any, any other, other business?
Oh, I'm on a roll. Here we go.
Oh, you got some more? Okay.
My last one is to kind of, yeah, do an analysis. I, I, every year like to look at the percentage in which the warrant articles have passed. And I've done some comparison of the operating budget. But this year, we had five warrant articles that passed in the eighties, twelve that passed in the seventies, six that passed in the sixties, three that passed in the fifties, and that was the stipend for the police, the library which passed just by three votes, and the operating budget and two that failed. The extension to the downtown docks only received thirty five point four percent in favor. And the reorganization of the public works was forty one point eight approved. So that gives us an idea of where the public, uh, operating budget. I was kind of curious to say, I, I thought fifty eight was, was low. And it is of the, it is one of the lowers, lowest. In two thousand seventeen, there was, it's operating budget passed by seventy nine point one. In two thousand eighteen, it passed by seventy four. In two thousand and nineteen, it passed by seven, six point six. In two thousand and twenty, it passed by sixty four point five. And this year, it passed by fifty eight point three. I found it interesting, the year that it passed by seventy six point one was the year which, which the, the library passed, I believe. Yes, no, it's, the two thousand and eighteen at seventy four was the year that the renovation to the library passed. And I would have thought that would have been a year in which the numbers might have been down. So it's just a, a way, another way of taking a look at what the voters are saying to us. And I always find that interesting to take a look at what's happening.
Yep, no, it is. All right, thank you, Linda. Do we have any other business? Seeing none, we'll go onto our committee reports. Linda, why don't we start with you? I don't know if you heard, Linda, we're gonna go on a committee.
No, my, I, I can't. Okay, but it's kind of cutting in and out my computer. Sometimes I do not have good connection. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I went to the Chamber Executive Board meeting. I had two meetings with the Friends of the Libby Museum on that MOU. I had two meetings with the Assessing Subcommittee of Wolfboro Waters. And it, they were interesting meetings. We met with Amanda McQuade, who is the head of the Sinobacteria Section of DES. She presented a very good presentation. She's working very closely with the committee. We're also looking at Bigelow Labs and we met with Peter Countway and Mike Wilmes talking about what kind of testing and water sampling we should do in two thousand and twenty one to supplement what we have done other years. I met with the EDC. They are going to be sending out their survey. And they also approved eight hundred dollars to spend for an ad in Yanking Magazine for May and June. And that comes through our town planner, the town planner is the one who puts in all the purchase orders. We all got to enjoy the, going to the polls on Tuesday. And the task force on programs met. And we're hoping to get as many of our programs this year up and running. We may have to make some adjustments in terms of numbers. We're hoping that by, as this vaccine rolls out, that as we get closer to summer, we will have less restrictions. So Christine was talking about not printing a brochure in hard copy, but printing it online and so that we could change any of our protocols and regulations or numbers without having a hard copy. So Christine will be working on that and I'm sure she'll get back and we'll get a list of exactly what her plans are for the summer. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Linda. Dave, we can't, I haven't been able to hear you, but just give a thumbs up. You had some committee meetings and they went well. There you go. And I had, this morning I had Wolfboro Community TV meeting, went well. Got up to date on them with everything. I had a Friends of Libby Museum meeting last, last week, I believe it was. And obviously the big discussion was on the, the MOU. And I believe since then, you guys have met and stuff. So, so that'd be more information coming forward with that. Dave and I have met, had a couple of task force meetings about the Fourth of July. Talking about some alternative ways of celebrating the Fourth, to have smaller groups. We've pretty much decided that the, the main parade idea will not happen in the Fourth, in the fireworks. But there will be some other versions of some things that we could do. There's some committees working on to come up with ideas. Get the right museum out at, also out at the NIC to do some events out there and stuff. So. I had a couple of subcommittee meetings under the planning board. We have a, we had a subcommittee for lighting to talk about in town lighting, which we've been talking about for the past three or four weeks here. And also stormwater management regulations to see how they're being handled and, and in the change in the environments, not the environments, but the change in strategies and on how stormwater management is being treated. So coming up with some ideas, recommendations on that. So that was it for me. Obviously, your next meeting. Yes.
Just in terms of committees, if board members would send me the committees they're interested in serving on, just so I will know if we have any conflicts, we'll go over it at the first meeting and we'll talk about it. But it will give me an idea to, if we're gonna run into any, two or three people who want the same committee. So.
Right, okay.
Do that, that would be a great help to me.
Yep, yep, that's good. Cause our next meeting, we'll, we'll go over that, the assignments and stuff and hopefully get everybody on some committees they like and maybe one or two they don't want to be on, but, you know, it goes with the territory. Okay, Town Managers Report. You have anything for us, Casey?
I do not have anything as, from the town manager, but from the Finance Director, just wanted to let you know that the audit is coming on the end of April, April twenty sixth to thirtieth. They'll be here for field work for year end twenty twenty. So we're still working diligently, trying to get everything tied up for that. But that's what we're looking at in the future. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Questions from the press? Alyssa, you still out here with us?
I'm here. I'm listening. I, I'm fine. I don't have any questions for you.
Okay, thank you. Public input. We have another second round of public input. Anybody out there have any comments or questions for us?
Hello, Brad. This is Suzanne.
Hi, Suzanne.
Hi. I would like to ask Linda if she could clarify, I may be misunderstood about the beach ordinance. I thought I heard you say that the parking lots will be open.
I, I'm saying, no, I, they were at fifty percent last year. I'm hoping, because I'm expecting the, the distance to change in relation to COVID, that they'll be, be at a hundred percent. All the rules and regulations will stay the same. I'm just talking about whether we have fifty percent allowed in the parking lot or a hundred percent. Does that clarify it for me, Suzanne?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else out there? Any other public input? Seeing none, I think the next thing would be a motion to adjourn.
Dave just made it.
Dave made it. Okay. Did we have a second? I didn't catch that. If we did.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Brian. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote. Linda?
Yes.
Dave? Luke?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
And Brad votes yes also. Thank you, everybody. Welcome aboard again, Luke and Brian. And look forward to, actually, we'll be seeing everybody in person on the thirty first.
Thank you. Nice to be back.
Yep.
Thank you.